Welcome to this, oh my goodness. The 19th meeting of the Milton Planning Board for fiscal year 2014. It's March 27, 2014. And we're here in the Carol Blue Conference Room. And I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman of the board. And the other people at the table should introduce themselves.
Emily Ennis, member.
And Duffy, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
William Clark, planning director.
Jean Peterson, clerk.
All right.
And are we being broadcast?
I was just going to, I was, we are not, I think that we're not being broadcast live because the selectmen are, say that they've got a better show. And therefore that we can be taped and replayed sometime in the middle of the night.[74.11][74.11](Laughter). But we are being taped and recorded.
We'll have to check our ratings.
We're going to defer the minutes, approval of minutes. We're going to meet on April 9. And we're going to have a hearing on a subdivision called Schuman Way.
Schu, yep, Schuman Way.
And we're going to meet again on April 23rd, which is Wednesday.
Correct, Bill?
As confirmed.
I can't tell you why right now.
And...
I've been back before, a couple times over tonight.
Well, this is, as you recall, the, there was a article presented to the selectmen with 250 signatures calling for a special town meeting. And the selectmen would like to make this a part of the annual town meeting, as would the people who collected the signatures. And because of publication situations, which I'm not entirely sure of, Bill, in any event, it seems better, in order to do it on the 23rd, we're going to have to put in an extra publication. But the 24th is bad because the attorney for their nursery, Mr. Cortrane, is going to a basketball game.
In Virginia.
In Virginia. And actually, his daughter is playing in the basketball game.
In Virginia.
In Virginia, so...
So not a random, Ra.
So it isn't, it isn't that he got, he got tickets and...
Well, it actually makes it easier for us to remember that in April, we're meeting both nights on a Wednesday night, so that works.
Okay. So we will be having a hearing on the citizens' article, which has to do with landscaping business use.
This is on the 9th.
Which is on the 23rd.
Sorry, on the 23rd, yes.
Schuman Way on the 9th. Landscaping business, plus the, you recall that we determined to give the developer of the town farm the option to proceed under the new zoning. They have, they are about to file a preliminary plan to freeze the zoning, the old zoning, but we want to give them the ability to elect to proceed under the new zoning.
Right.
And if they do proceed under the new zoning, we want them to be able to convert one of the historic buildings at the town farm into an affordable unit, plus possibly move the so-called pest house onto the same site and convert it into a second affordable unit.
So we'd have a cluster of historic buildings that would be preserved.
Right.
And as affordable units.
And they would be, they would be affordable housing. I mean, it really would be quite an appropriate use.
Mm-hmm.
So, in any event, Bill, if you could, I'll try and remember to send out the language to these folks, the final language. You recall, they let me finalize the language on the, do you recall that?
Twenty-one? On article, on...
Yeah, paragraph 21.
Yeah.
Twenty-one.
We just want to give them the final.
You didn't give them the final?
I don't know.
We did.
The planning board members? Us, after the last meeting?
In any event...
The Warren Committee did.
All right, well, you have to give it to us as well.
We worked on it, so we got it to the Warren Committee.
All right.
So then just send it to the rest of us.
In any event, we'll give it to the planning board. But it is essentially, it was, it was the same article that we approved at our meeting, in our recommendation.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that the only change we see to the addition of two affordable housing units?
Plus the, plus the, you know, plus the ability to proceed under the new, if they proceed under the old zoning, which they have a right to do just by filing their preliminary plan to freeze the zoning, then they don't have to provide any affordable units. But the new zoning is, is more flexible, and I have every anticipation that they will be proceeding under it.
And I'm not even talking the two affordable units, they had proposed 23 units.
Right.
Is the new zoning going to allow them to propose more than 23 units?
The new zoning will allow them to propose more than 23 units, except their contract with the town says 23 units, so (laugh) that's all they're going to get. And the planning board is, is in the driver's seat on how many units they can, they can receive. And it's going to probably approve a subdivision street just long enough so that they can put in 23 units.
We don't, we don't see this as any advantage over the previous parties that submitted a proposal. In other words, letting them now operate under this new bylaw, does that put them at an advantage over the previous parties that they were bidding against?
I don't think so.
I think it's still governed by the purchase and sale signed by the selectmen. So, it's not the vagrant, the only difference, as I understand from what Alex has said, is that the zoning would allow them to put those affordable units in. But I don't think it does anything else, from what I know. They still have to operate under the purchase and sale.
I can't imagine they'd want to put those two units in unless they thought they were going to make some money on it.
Well...
Well, you see, they need to do something with the pest house. They really want to move the pest house.
It's on this piece of property.
It's there, and they're not allowed to tear it down. And so they really want to move it.
So you're thinking it's a nice negotiating move, is, you know, if you move the pest house, which will make you happy, make us happy by having the affordable housing, everybody gets something.
So beyond even, is not necessarily beyond, but beyond the new bylaw, they want to get that pest house moved and turned, they're going to do something, a good deed.
Yeah.
What?
They have to.
They have to, right.
They have to move, so then they have to, a good deed.
And when our best interest as a town is preserve the historic buildings and get some affordable housing out of it.
It really is, it really, I think it's a pretty nice dovetailing. Yes.
Give me one of those mics.
Oh.
Thank you.
Now, this doesn't work?
No.
This doesn't work.
The audio's fine.
Fine, he said.
Oh.
You're good, you're good.
All right. Now, everyone has a mic.
Hi, Mike.
Everybody should have a mic.
Everyone should have a mic.
I got one right here.
We're going to now have citizens speak, and citizens who would like to speak to the board are encouraged to come up and speak, introducing yourself, speaking into the microphone. And we look forward to having a lively, a lively time at Citizens Speak tonight. Who would like to speak? Now, Mr. Joe Henning, I wonder why you're here. Are you just, you like, you just love the planning board, and you enjoy, I don't see that we're on, we're going to, well, we're going to do, I don't know what we're going to do about the town meeting articles, other than...
Well, just find out, as you'll find out.
All right, let's do the town meeting articles right now, so that you can...
They'll all stay online, so you can just picture what happened.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, welcome. Thank you.
If I don't put it on your agenda, and you want to talk about it, it couldn't.
Town meeting articles.
You get more, right, you get more put on there, just in case you want to talk about it.
Right.
Well, I don't think we want to, we want to talk, well, we'll...
You gave the update of what we were going to do, so is there anything more beyond that?
No.
I think that we've discussed what we're going to go. Okay.
I do have a question on the town meeting articles, actually. Have you already met with the Warren Committee on them?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't need to worry about showing up for medical marijuana articles.
No, I think the medical marijuana, we, I told them that you were our primary expert.
On the article.[725.62][725.62](Laughter) Let me just clarify, on the article.
That's not what he said.
I'm sure it's not.
We, we managed to stumble through it, and I think we convinced them that it seemed like a good plan. We do need the, Mr. Flynn's language for the moratorium was a big hit.
Excellent.
And I think we'll get recommendations to pass it all.
My calendar thanks you.
All right.
We need to pass both.
Yes, I know.
We need to fast forward.
No, we need to pass both of the articles. Originally, we were talking about something else, we have to pass them both.
My understanding was that we had to pass them both.
But Emily is going to present at town meeting, so you'd better start preparing now. Because it was, we...
The questions were...
The questions were, were, there were a lot of questions.
There were.
Have we answered them pretty well?
Emily is the expert.
Is what your answer was, thank you very much.
It was a pat answer, we had it down.
So you're going to tell me maybe later on what their questions were, so I know what to prepare for?
Yes.
Fabulous.
There was only one that we couldn't answer, that we stumbled, but we came back without pat answer. Emily will know.
I definitely want to know what that question was, you can send me an email.
All right. The DCR land swap, and people say, what DCR land swap is that, pray tell? And I think that we'll let the people who are, who I believe are the Milton Falls LLC, and Paul Sullivan, who are going to come up and tell us what the, what the proposal
How do you do? My name is Tony Caruso, we have all familiar faces, you know. I'm one of the...
We haven't seen you in a while. We were, we were thinking that, you know, people would say, what about those guys? And people, you know, they just search back in their memory, and it sort of, it all comes back, though.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you, I'm one of the owners of the parcel in question, and I know Paul Sullivan are...
You have to tell us about what the parcel is.
Are consultant. Well, the parcel, I don't know, maybe we can bring that over to the table, it's too far over.
Ed.
Bring that over to the table.
Ed.
Mr. Chairman, there's a TV too. So last time these gentlemen were before us, I raised the objection of the presentation that they gave, with the white, a piece of white paper, which we cannot distinguish one thing from the other, sitting in this room, and if that's the case, certainly people at home cannot distinguish one thing from the other.
A lot, a lot of hard ones.
Put the other one back up, please. You expect the people at home to understand what that, what's on that piece of paper? I can't, I can't tell.
No, this is just the original, this is existing condition plan.
I can't tell, I can't tell whether a dam is or anything else.
I, I didn't produce the plan.
Did you have a plan showing everything color?
Yes.
Everything?
Yes, this is, yeah.
A dam and anything else?
Yep, you can see the dam right here, yep.
Okay, can, how is, do you have a camera that can focus on this thing?
Yes, he said.
All right, this is good.
Okay, well, I mean, you pretty much know the history, we acquired this property in 2007.
This is part of the Lailston and Hollingsworth Paper Mill.
Right.
And it was on both sides of the river.
Yep.
And on our side of the river, there was a warehouse and a water facility.
That's right, they used to take the water out of the river, balance it with proper pH, and pump it over to the main production facility on the Hyde Park Side, on River Street. We owned the whole thing, myself and my partner, Can Mac, and we sold that to Hyde Park Side, which is now a shopping center. So, we, that was done around 2007, and then the market kind of let, went down for us, so we haven't done anything since then, and development-wise. But what we want to do now is, the market's stronger, and we feel we have something of value here, we want to start developing the site. There's a number of options here. We know that DCR does have interest in taking the site, I don't want to say acquiring the site, because this is the last privately owned parcel along the Ponson River. In Milton. In Milton. So what they want to do, especially with the bike trail along here, is take the bike, the bike trail, rather than running along Truman Highway, bringing it in all around here and out here, that the two accesses is an underpass of the Falmont Line and an overpass of the Falmont Line.
Well, a grade crossing.
Grade crossing, yes. Yeah, a grade crossing, I'm sorry, yeah. We, this was rezoned for 89 units, as you know. But what, it would be a much simpler and less costly process for us to develop the parcel right here, on, off Truman Highway. So we are proposing to DCR that we basically swap these two parcels. And what we're looking at, what we're looking at for the front parcel is not anywhere near the 89 units, but maybe 24 townhouse units. Basically, over here is the underpass, and over here's the grade crossing. So it's a much simpler, more pleasant, relaxed site along Truman Highway. Now, the units would be two bedrooms, that would limit any, minimize impact from city services, because it would, the student enrollment would... Each unit would be three, three levels high, except one level is really right at the grade of Truman Highway, which would be the parking. So you have two living levels above Truman Highway. That's the general overall plan, and we have drafted PUD language for that, which is why we're here, hopefully, to get your input on that. We met with the selectmen, I'd say, three or four weeks ago, and they asked us two things, one that we get our input on a PUD plan, and two, that we get fairly confirmed confirmation from DCR that they would be interested in such a, such a spot. And we'll be meeting with them in about three weeks, maybe four, because we're finally there with our schedule. And that's, that's kind of the overall gist of it. And the statistics are pretty good, it would benefit the town to the tune of $135,000 a year in real estate taxes, and about $15,000, we figure, in excise taxes. Most of that, most of the benefit of the parcel in the rear, what we would do is we would turn it over to DCR, take down that radio building there that's falling down by itself anyway, and roughly grade it, and DCR would then finish it and build a park there. And I think Milton's residents would be the prime user of that, because it's, it's right there, right there. And we're looking at, right now, we're looking at maybe 24 units, in land that's fairly dark. That land used to be used for parking when the plant was in full operation, they would park. It's not pristine land, I mean, it's wooded land, it's young growth, but they, they used most of this land over here, and on this, over here for parking, to, to work over here, the buildings and the water purification and all that. And plus, it makes it easier if, well, I shouldn't say if, when Red Dam is taken down, and the Baker Dam is taken down, it makes it easier and cheaper if we're not there, if that's owned by DCR. So they won't have to truck away all that contaminated fill offsite. That's really it.
Yeah, this, as everybody knows, is PCBs were trapped in front of the dam, in front of both dams, the Baker Dam and the T and M Dam, and these two multinational corporations own the sites where the state believes the PCBs originated from. There's ongoing negotiations between the state and those firms. One is the parent company of Stop &amp; Shop, and the other one is Berkshire Hathaway, which owns Thomas &amp; Bet, which was the original owner of the other property. And one of the possibilities is typically PCBs are trucked down south, and one of the largest costs of cleanup is trucking fees and the dumping fees in the state that's willing to take them. And, but there's another way to do it, it's done, been done before, and is to entomb the PCBs in this little cove right here, which would eliminate the trucking out of state of the PCBs, and probably significantly cut the cost of the cleanup, which we believe might accelerate the cleanup and the willingness of the potential liable parties to put up the money to clean up in front of the dam there.
Now, if the back parcel gets transferred to the DCR, obviously, if the bike path goes underneath the tracks, it can't return over the tracks, is, is there a way to go, keep going down the banks? In other words, the bike path would just continue down the bank to Paul's Bridge?
It would have to be built.
But it has to be built, but there's no...
The grade's pretty leveled, for the most part, or...
Because that would be, if they could get under the tracks, that would be a big, a big boon. I think it's a, I think that it seems like a good plan. I'm not sure that I think that the, the design is, is fantastic, but it's, it's just a concept, and it can be...
It is a concept.
It can be worked on.
I think one of the concerns we had when you came for the Brownfields rezoning was the level of density and the traffic that was going to be passing under that bridge. I remember we had a lot of conversations back and forth about people trying to get one way, and people trying to get the other, and that bridge, you know, the underpass is not very wide. And so taking the residential out from that side and bringing it forward, and bringing it forward with a much lower density...
Right, right.
Addresses some of the concerns that we had initially.
It's about a two-thirds reduction in traffic, as we figure it.
One thing is, at the master plan, Community Media Full Village, there was a lot of conversation that I heard about access to the Ponson River.
Yeah.
And having this park here would certainly create a lot more access to the river, in that, in that area of the river, because there's very little access right now on the upper part of the river.
Yeah, I think that became one of the top 10 issues, was access to the Ponson, so as it came out, so that certainly addresses it.
There's one thing we didn't mention, too, right now is a grossly underutilized canoe launch over here, which we're going to rebuild, it's practically overgrown. So the idea here is we'll provide, you know, some land and some parking here for a canoe launch, and also one here, where they could either come out of the water here and portage around.
Until the dam's taken down, yeah.
Until a dam's gone for that, so if you, with this park here, you'd be able to do that. Right, right now, these buildings are ruined, you can't divide them, you know, you know that.
Now, so it, it sounds, it sounds, it sounds like design work is important, and obviously it needs to be zoned. As Paul probably told you, he's got a little lot under consideration up near the landfill, which he's talking about condominium development. There is a building near the Blue Hill Parkway, which used to be the Knights of Columbus Hall, which a developer would like to do condominiums in. There is a rectory of St. Pius Church that a developer would like to do condominiums in. There is a big piece of land on Canton Avenue that certain people think that the large wooden house should be preserved, and as an inducement to preserving the house, there should be condominium development permitted there. So you can see that if you're in the white, and, and we have this too, and we don't want to do six different zoning articles, we want to, we want to somehow make it so that where there should be, could be and should be condominiums, to make that possible, but not simply say, anytime you want it, you can get it. We need to, we need to figure out how, how best to approach this, because we do have a lot of proposals, they may not all be great proposals, they have to be considered.
So you think there's some sort of overlay that would, could apply?
An overlay is fine, I mean, but it would be, it would be, you know, in a residency zoning, if you have...
Right, 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 right.
I mean, that's what an overlay is.
Right.
It's, it doesn't usurp the underlying zoning, it, it gives you an auction for the underlying zoning. Now, what we did, as you remember, Paul, is we said, we want you to go and see the master plan committee.
Yes, you did.
And I, you know, I, it seems to me that we have a highly paid group of consultants who are doing our master planning, and I would like to get some input from them on condominiums, and I would like to get it sooner, rather than later, because in order to, October is the next, next town meeting.
Sure.
So we have to be ready by the middle of the summer, and it's now spring.
Yes, summer is coming, and Paul has already been in touch with me, and I...
Yes, summer is coming. And Paul has already been in touch with me, and I have been back in touch with Paul. The perfect opportunity for them to come before the master plan committee is actually the Housing and Neighborhoods Roundtable in May. That date is, we're trying to confirm it this week. We've had to move the dates of the roundtables in April around a little bit due to other events. We're going to have them come in May. This is absolutely appropriate for that. And what the, I'll go into it when I do my update a little bit more, but the roundtables are designed to get people with specific knowledge of certain topics in a room together to talk about them. And given the fact that what you're trying to do is so close to these other possible areas, it's a perfect opportunity for you all to come together and talk about it. The consultants know that the next town meeting will be in October and that they have to produce, any recommended zoning must be done over the summer to be ready for that. So I would say we're very on target for being able to consider this in the master plan process.
Well, I, I, it does seem to me that the consultants, in order to make the, the roundtable as productive as possible, should come in with some ideas on the issue, which they develop not at the roundtable, but in their office, drawing on their experience.
Well, we can take it up at our next meeting on the 15th of April. That'd be perfect timing.
I, not exactly perfect, since I think that they should be working on it tomorrow. Beginning next week.
We, we do have quite a few things that we're working on at the moment, so.
I understand that.
But I will pass it on to them and tell them that we expect to hear from them on the 15th.
But, no, I, I mean, it does seem to me that if it, if it, in the end, it gets dumped on the planning board to do, we need to know it sooner. I, I mean, if the master plan, it will be the planning board that determines what to do here, but we would like the input from the master plan committee. But we would like it, I mean, May is, is, is getting pretty late because we've got to do this by, by July.
Understood. Not a problem, Alex.
Not a problem. I want a non-negotiable deadline.
No, only I get to set non-negotiable deadlines.
All right. Well, okay, I've, you can see that I've done the best I can with the master plan committee, and we'll see how that works.
We'll be talking, Paul.
But we, we, we need to, we need to, we need to get some sensible zoning in, in place. I, I personally think that we're going to come to the town meeting with a proposal, and the town meeting will decide whether they like it or not. And it probably should be designed so that they can slice and dice. In other words, if they don't like part, they can dump it and...
Right, not lose all of that.
And not lose all of it. So, but does the board feel that, I mean, this seems to make some sense to me, especially since this piece of land on the Truman Parkway side of the tracks was a parking lot until 1965?
Nineties, it was still used.
Still used in the 1990s?
Yeah, Thursday Paper Company was still there in the 90s. And they, they were still using it. And then they sold the front piece to DCR and they sold the back piece to the current owners.
Ed.
What's the acreage, Paul, on the park area?
3.3.
3.3 will be packed, or packed, yes.
Yes, and the, the front piece is about an acre small, 2.2.
Could you fit a plate down in there? I mean, hold up a 12, 14-year-olds to play. Are all of the top, like, to be both age groups?
Yeah, it's a pretty good space, yeah. Just pretty, quite a bit of space there. There's really no restrictions on it.
Are the neighbors in favor of that, of this?
We, we met with them. The second meeting we had, it was a snowstorm and we were up at Fuller Village, and we went, but, you know, obviously the neighbors didn't come, which...
We met before that.
And we, we're going to continue our meetings. We just, you know, come up with this concept plan very, fairly recently. And, you know, I, I think at the master plan committee, we, if we have the roundtables, we thought we'd invite the neighbors if that would be okay.
Yeah, well, it won't replace a neighborhood meeting because the roundtable has a specific purpose, but yeah, absolutely, the more...
Invite some representatives of the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we plan on continuing to meet with them.
So are you looking for, from the master plan committee, some guidance on condo, condominium zoning for the town?
Yeah, what's, what possible projects are out there? One of the things that's been coming up is that people are looking for a diversity of housing types. So if we're interested as a town in adding something like the townhouses or other types of condominiums, guidance on how to zone for that is obviously great, how other communities have done it, because we'll be looking for precedent studies. Of the sites that Alex brought up tonight, some of those are very, you know, they're very different from each other. So how would you structure a zoning art, a single zoning article that could take into account all of these different possibilities? So Paul and I can talk further about the exact information that we need, but since it's not something we've done very much of.
Right.
You know, we have condos in our current commercial districts. So they're almost moving it at least down on Central Avenue and, of course, the wharf. It's almost moving into a mixed-use district, and we're actually talking about that in April. But we don't have much condominium use in the residential neighborhoods. And thinking about how we'd structure that would be important. So all information is always welcome.
Chris of Brook was the last, non-age-restricted development, I believe, condominiums.
Yeah, because, of course, Fuller Village is condominiums, but it's age-restricted, so. And then how do you, if you're putting condominiums into a residential area, how do you incorporate them without taking away from the character of someplace that's mostly single families or single with some mix of two and three families? So, design guidelines might be a possibility for something like that. So that, you know, the townhouses work out well, but if people are, if you don't make the zoning specific enough to require that, you set in design guidelines saying that it has to look similar to the neighborhood that surrounds it, so.
Ed.
10% affordable?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we did a draft of a PUD for the area. We actually included some language with regards to the St. Pius property. We knew that was out there, and then O'Neill's property too, it could probably be taken in. Those three properties could fit into something pretty simple, I think.
And Alex's point about larger historic homes, some way of either keeping them as a single-family home or converting them to condos as part of a larger condominium development. You know, we've been doing the, the cluster bylaw to preserve open space, and there may be a way of also incorporating that into a con... So you're essentially clustering the condos and leaving, as you've done in parts in your concept plan, leaving some open space there. So there's a lot of possibilities for working into this.
Was Brushwood, is that a zoning article that created that, or how?
Yes. Brushwood is zoning.
A modification of that might...
Well, it, it's existing buildings.
Yeah, for the existing building.
But I, I mean, but, yeah, I, I mean, we've got lots of, lots of stuff that we can draw. We, we're going to have to... There are some people who say the schools are close to being overcrowded, but I find that difficult to believe since they were just built a few years ago and presumably they were planned to...
Well, what we're talking about here are two bedrooms, which minimize that impact.
I, I understand that, but I, I don't have, I mean, some people are suggesting that all condos should have only two bedrooms. And it seems to me that you don't attract, I think attracting families is a nice thing for this town to do. It used to be that, you know, if you were single, you live in Quincy, and then when you had a family, you'd move to Milton. It just seems to me that there certainly is a, a place for two-bedroom condominiums, but having nothing but two-bedroom condominiums, I think, would change the character of the town. And I'm not sure that, you know, I'm not sure that that's what we want. But it has to be, it has to, I mean, this is the, the sort of thing that we have to figure out because...
It seems, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, from my discussions with many Milton residents, that, you know, the population's aging, it's, it's, you know, it's in the master plan committee report, and there's limited opportunities for housing that's not age-restricted in the community for people who want to downsize and go to a smaller place and remain in the community. And, you know, I, I think townhouses is going to address that. It's also, it creates a lot of revenue in a relatively small apostles and without too much burden on the school systems and, and town services. And so I, I think it addresses a lot of issues, you know, if we can create a townhouse zoning bylaw that, that works.
But, you know, young families who can't afford a, afford a house.
That's right.
You know, two bedrooms is probably not going to be very useful for them. And...
Could be a start home, you know, the first...
Well, it could be, but I think that if you have three bedrooms, you've got a better start home.
It may also depend on the site. Some sites may be more particularly useful to have two bedrooms, and some might be more appropriate for three bedrooms, yeah.
There's no point in having a tot lot if there are no tots.
Well, our target audience would, would be young professionals, mostly, young, who maybe work downtown, who are...
Yeah, you're relatively close to the commuter line.
It's, it's under, slightly under a mile.
Yeah.
Not a bad walk in the summer. Buses in here. Our marketing, as we think through our marketing, it would be for, for the young professionals, the, you know, the college graduate, the entry-level startup, my entry-level job.
There are people in their 50s looking for townhouses.
Yeah, and then it's, and it's the other end, the downsizes.
Yeah, and that's the part of Milton that we don't have. It's the young people just graduating from college, wanting to come back and live where they grew up or moving to the area and wanting to live near Boston and not out there.
You can't afford it. I mean, Milton is a premium, premium town. It's hard, yeah.
And you, you know, but there is young families also, is, young professionals are one group that may be undeserved. Young families is another group that is undeserved. So it isn't, it's easy to say no school kids, but I think that if you, if you zone for no school kids, you're, you're losing a lot in your, in your community.
The importance is to have the diversity of housing, so that you can accommodate all of that.
If you look at what the sales were at 36th Central, and the market hadn't turned it when that came on the market, and it sold out in less than 12 months.
Yeah, that was astonishing.
Full price every unit.
No, I, I've been here with Truman Parkway, a busy highway. It, it, it makes some sense to have a two-bedroom community.
Right.
Regarding Truman Highway as a busy highway, how does one get across the street, Paul?
Direct crosswalks.
Turnaround. You mean driving or walk?
How do you get off one side of this, the, of Truman Highway?
There, there seems to be an island or a break in the island.
Any thoughts of traffic lights, pedestrian lights?
Yeah, yeah, we, we talked about that.
But DCR owns the road, which we'd have to see what the...
This entrance right here would kind of be the main entrance. We, we talked about a set of lights here.
Well, yeah. I mean, especially if DCR is going to, let's say, as soon as the swap goes through, DCR is planning to do this as a park, they're going to want to be able to get pedestrians from the neighborhood.
That's true.
So it'll be in their interest to put one up.
It'll be in their, because they actually own, if you look it up, it, DCR owns Truman Parkway.
Well, but of course, would DCR, they, they wouldn't be parking. It would be sort of bicycle traffic going through.
Well, and people from the neighborhoods walking across.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, they might want, you know...
I don't think they'd do that otherwise. I wouldn't try to do that.
I, I've done it. It's challenging.
It's not fun trying. I'd try crossing it on foot. There is a vehicle turnaround over here, though. If you rent a vehicle, you come in, it can drive out.
But I, I think both uses would need, need some traffic light, yeah? Sure.
Might have the advantage of slowing traffic down a little bit.
That'd be a good point to slow, because it does, it's a long stretch where people pick up speed right around there.
So let's advance matters a little bit. Are we supportive of the idea that introducing condominiums into the Milton residential mix is an idea that should be explored? Because one alternative is, there are condos, don't like them, thumbs down. I think that it's an idea that we should explore.
I agree.
I think it meets a lot of the criteria that are coming out of the master plan, so.
And that part of Milton, as we know, does not have the recreational facilities.
Yeah.
Very, very wanting in that, so it'll be great.
Well, it's hitting a number, I mean, the idea of increased tax revenue to the town is hitting for the people who are worried about the tax base. Increased diversity of housing stock is hitting another point. And increased access to the Nipponza River, I mean, that's three major points that have come out of the visioning process so far, so I think we should definitely explore it.
All right. I, I think that...
Stop building tomorrow.
It's the, it, it is something that we want to explore. And we, I think, if we can, we'll be sponsoring an article in October.
Yeah.
We're going to work on it. And we're going to not, we're going to get this, we're going to get something.
I'm not sure I have an email copy of this, so if you could email it to me. And if you email me copies of the plans, that'd be great. I'll send them over to the consultants and to the master plan committee itself, so they can start thinking about it.
All right. What else? This is, I think this is, this is useful. What else would you like to, we, we've, actually, we've, we've been, we don't... The, the plan is not something that I, that we generally don't like.
The design needs some work.
We, we think that the architect and the landscape architect are going to be able to do great things here.
Sure.
Well, when we go to DCR, we'd like to be able to say that the Milton Planning Board has met, heard us a couple of times, and is generally favorable, but they have the final say in whatever happens.
That's likely to be, you, you see, there has to be a rezoning, but it is likely that it will be a special permit.
Sure.
And that we will, in fact, have the final say.
Yeah, and we're not saying the opposite. They don't want to have anything...
No, I, I mean, but, but you, when you, I, I think you can, you can say what you, unless the, the board thinks that you should, they should say something else. I think what he just said is...
I think that's very reasonable.
Is a reasonable statement of our position.
They may, they may contact you. I'm not sure.
They may.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Well, nice to see you. We hope to see you sooner than...
This week's will be a lot. Fighting over bathrooms is one problem.
All right, the DCR is, good luck.
Yeah, thanks. I got it. Got the message there.
You might talk to them about, you know, one of the things that you get in state stuff a lot is consistency with the local master plan. So you might actually say, look, it's a, something that's in progress, but it does meet the things that have come out of it so far.
You know, three things. You, you said it's tax revenue increase.
Tax revenue increase, diversity of housing types, and access to the Nipponza. Yeah, yeah, that's access to the Nipponza and recreation, absolutely. And Ed's point that this is not, this is an area of town that does not have a lot of access to recreation, that's a huge point.
It's very limited. If we can put, fit something as, because literally gunned, like David.
Oh, I think so. Yeah, I, I don't...
But a young, young children, yeah.
And completing the bike trail along the Nipponza itself, that's going to also be big.
The canoe launch area.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so we're, 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 now, we want an update on the master plan. What have you been doing?
We've been doing quite a bit, actually. So the last update I gave you was after the March 1st public forum, which is, of course, where... well-attended. We're right now in the middle of a series of three roundtables, and the way the roundtables are structured is they are, of course, like all the other meetings, open to the public, and we welcome public, members of the public to attend and comment, but they are primarily geared towards assembling people who have expertise or interest in certain specific areas covered by the master plan to come, sit at a big table, and just talk to each other about some of the issues that are out there. And the consultants facilitate this discussion. So we had our discussion on a healthy Milton Tuesday night at Tucker School. The roundtables are really geared to have about 20 to 25 people show up and go through the exercise. We had about 40 to 45 people show up, so it was extremely well-attended. We went through the different ideas surrounding healthy Milton. It's not just about personal wellness, but it's about the health and the sustainability of the community as a whole. And we talked a lot about the pedestrian accessibility, traffic calming, bicycle, but we also, bicycle accessibility throughout town, obviously encouraging people to have different ways of getting around town that don't rely on the car. But we also talked about things like people's access to healthy foods, people's access to health services, the hospital attended, and talked about some of the programs that they have available. And what's good about getting people around the table like this is you find out that different people are working on different things, there are different resources available. So for example, the Milton Hospital has some community funding available for people at the roundtable who were talking about projects they'd like to do. And so getting these people together, because the ultimate goal of the master plan is to have a set of implementation strategies so that this doesn't just get done and thrown on the shelf, but it actually gives us a guideline about how to achieve this. One of the other big things was Jeff Stone, who I think many people in town know for his, the various work that he's done around town, has proposed something called a Brook Walk, which would go along Pine Tree Brook, basically, essentially connecting the whole town. And so he presented that as something that would connect bicycle and pedestrian paths that currently exist in different parts of town but aren't necessarily connected to each other. So it was getting a chance for people to talk about what they're doing and give feedback. So our next roundtable, we'd originally scheduled all of our, the other two roundtables for April, but there are various community events going on, so we're moving the schedule around a little bit. Our next roundtable is Vibrant Mixed Use Districts, and that will be April 30th at Glover at 7:00 PM. And that's going to be primarily looking at our business districts as they are now, as people would like to see them. One of the things that came out of the visioning process was the idea of, do we want to add residential above commercial in our current business districts and make them much more of a mixed use, especially when you consider the transportation options that we have in some of our districts? So we'll be looking at that. We'll be inviting people who have expertise in this area to come and talk to us, but obviously, members of the public are more than welcome. The third roundtable will be towards the end of May. We're just working on dates and locations at the moment, because that's the time when a lot of school stuff is happening, and of course, town meeting at the beginning of May. We don't want to conflict with that, but that one will be on neighborhoods and housing. And so the housing diversity we talked about a little bit tonight, we'll talk about there. The 40Bs that have been a topic of discussion in town, we'll talk about those, and we'll also be talking at that point about commercial, existing commercial in neighborhoods. Some people have expressed a desire for more, some people have expressed a desire for less, so I'm expecting that particular roundtable to be well, well-attended, and I'll have dates at our next meeting for that one. And that is where we are.
Okay. Now, what are you going to do about facilities? I mean, for instance, we need, the fire department needs some attention.
Yeah.
And is the master plan committee going to do something about the needs of the fire department?
Yes, and so the work of the master plan, in addition to the public roundtables that's going on, you know, there's a fire department space needs committee. So they're primarily doing that work. We will coordinate with them and get the information. Same for the Granite Avenue Study Committee, is that we will get the information. So we're not duplicating the efforts of other committees, but we are coordinating with them. The master plan committee has been divided into subcommittees. They will be meeting on specific issues over the next couple of months. That will be one of them under the facilities. I don't have a schedule for that now, but they will obviously be posted in public meetings.
Now, we've heard talk that the schools could be stressed, and therefore, there should be nothing but two-bedroom condominiums. It seems to me that we need some reliable information about the schools and what their projections are. I mean, if there's going to be a need for a new school.
Yeah.
Then it seems to me that that's something that.
That would absolutely, yeah.
The master plan has to definitely, I mean, the foreseeable needs of the schools needs to be assessed, and I don't know that there is, I don't know if there's an existing committee doing that.
Well, I'm sure the school committee's looking at it. But, but as, as a discussion for the master plan, that does fall under the facilities element of, in the town services element of the master plan, Daphne Politis, who's the lead consultant, is actually taking care of the, that's one of her areas, is the facilities. I will, she is aware that there is a question out there of the school needs, so I will make sure that that is being looked at. But yes, it would be, that's part of the master plan, that is part of the, what we would be doing.
Yes.
And presenting.
Yes, it would.
Including the implementation strategies.
Including the implementation strategies, that's quite right. And, okay, and, and that, of course, is, the implementation strategies, speaking of the condominiums, that's sort of the crux of what we want from the master plan committee. And I guess it would be late May before we had, I mean, how long would it take the consultants to synthesize whatever they get and have something that we can act on?
So the process, we'll do the last roundtable in late May. We're going to have an open house in June at the Milton Public Library, and what we'll do is we'll have maps and charts of the data that we've gathered to date for people to drop in and give comments on. Then the public process over the summer is, you know, it's pretty quiet as far as town business over the summer, but I've talked to the library director, I've talked to the town administrator, and what we're going to do is we're going to have boards up in the library and the town, probably town hall, probably changing either every week or every two weeks with information that we've gathered and a way for members of the public to comment on that information. So while that process is going on, sort of a way for people to check in without having to go to a meeting at night or interrupt their, their summer plans, while that's going on, the consultants are going to be writing the actual draft of the report, including the implementation strategies. They'll present the draft report in September to the town, and then the final presentation at the October town meeting. Concurrent with that, obviously, is if we're going to do any zoning changes coming out of the master plan.
What is our, when is the timeline for the October meeting?
I believe we have to get everything in at the beginning of August.
End of July.
So, yeah, end of July, beginning of August. So that's what I've told the consultants, is if any of the implementation strategies require immediate zoning changes, that we need to have those done on a faster schedule so that we can be doing our work for the October town meeting. Now, it may be that there are some zoning strategies, and I don't know what they'll be there yet, obviously, the condominiums could be one of them, some that we're going to want to do in October, and some that we may want to phase in later. So I'm not expecting that every zoning strategy is going to be done for October.
Not everyone. I think that my view is that condominiums are something that is going to happen, you know, October.
Right.
And my thinking is that we're going to have to do something about signs.
Yeah, I wanted to talk to you about that, because I agree. You know, we had talked originally about doing the signs for May and, as a group, and the fact that we already had quite a lot on our plate for May. And I agree, I think we need to look at the sign bylaw for October, and whether that's a planning, I think that's mostly a planning board only, but I can certainly ask our consultants if they have recommendations for that, but I agree that that should be an October one.
Well, I think that actually the signage is, we have this signage, there was an article that has been deferred, but it had said no LED signs, no electric bulb signs prohibited in the town, so that there is, there is that, and it probably, you know, we're going to have to, the types and positions, and I think that signage is something which the master plan committee could productively address.
I would also say that if we're looking at additional revitalizations to our business districts, which of course is something that we've been looking at at Central Avenue, that signs contribute a lot to the perception of an area. And so allowing certain types of signs and disallowing certain types of signs can do a lot for creating an impression of what an area can be. So I will add that to the list of the things I talked to the consultants about.
All right. Now, if we're doing condominiums and signs.
Yeah.
What else do we, what else are we thinking may come down? We, it seems to me if we have three big zoning, I mean, we've got an opportunity for maybe one or two smaller things, but.
I'll bring bed and breakfast back as one of the smaller things.
I mean, it may be that if you, if you're going to do bed and breakfast, you should discuss this with the master plan committee.
I will, yes.
And if they, once again, it's.
Actually, it works into the third forum of the, of the neighborhoods, because that's where they'd be.
The only thing that doesn't work is the implementation, getting it so we can implement it.
I will bring it up with the master plan committee, yes.
By the end of July. They're not going to get to go away this summer.
What, the master plan committee?
No, they're going to stay in town.
I'll tell them that, too.
Mr. Chairman, a few minutes ago, you mentioned the Granite Avenue Committee.
Yes.
I live over that neck of the woods.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have the slightest idea what's going on. I know many of my friends and neighbors are very unhappy with some of the stuff that's going on. It comes to me, and I don't know what to say. The only thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to have representatives of the Granite Avenue Committee come before us so we can ask them some questions.
Okay.
I hear things about hotels and so forth, but I have an attendance meeting, I don't know when the meeting's a schedule, a obvious schedule, or where the hell, I don't know. So I'd like to have some representatives.
What is their charge?
I don't know.
Who's charged them?
Selectmen, it was the Board of Selectmen.
What is their charge?
I don't know.
Does the town of Milton own that piece of property yet?
No. They're looking at what could be done. My understanding.
It still belongs to the state.
I believe so, yeah.
So, you know, some of these I'd like to clear up.
I think we should, we should ask Bill to.
On what grounds is the state going to turn it over to the town?
What the hell?
It's, you know, it's.
We need more information, clearly.
I'm just looking at the foundation.
The concrete, I've never saw that.
No, I'm just thinking, you know, you decide what we're going to do, like, you ain't going to be waiting, are you?
No, 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 you have a.
Let's ask them, let's find out.
Yeah, I think we should ask Bill for an update, and then, as you say, invite him in, yeah.
Very unhappy people over there.
We don't want people unhappy.
Absolutely, not in my.
I think you can tell them, nothing's happening too fast.
Well. You know what's going on over there?
No, I don't think I could, because I don't work for the state.
I don't have any idea. I hear different things, but I'm not sure.
All right. So tell the master plan committee that they're not to.
Not to go on vacation.
Everything that the Granite Avenue Advisory Committee says as necessary truth.
I will keep that in mind and pass it along.
All right. Anything else, any other messages for the master plan committee? No?
No, I'm moving to the gym, Mr. Chairman.
We cannot have a town meeting, a town planner's report, because we have no town planner.
I have a question for you. What's the significance of eight?
Of eight?
Eight. Eight days from today, play ball at Fenway. Eight days.
That means really is spring. I second your notion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.